United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now I'll call the meeting to order, and as usual, we will start with the end of the month's night. Darren, you want to go first?
I have the pleasure of calling Cora. Do you want to come up here? Don't be so shy, I know you're not a pastor. Who's your teacher? Mr. Guinness. But it doesn't say who it's from, but I'm assuming it's from him. I got a little write-up before we hear. Cora is a great student who doesn't always get the recognition she deserves. She is super sweet, very helpful, she is kind, and truly has the kindest heart. She has a beautiful heart and loves to help whenever or where whatever is needed at the time. She is incredibly sweet, she is always smiling, happy, and wants hugs from me. Cora is also one of the student ambassadors and has taken on the position to open up, taken on the position to open up and become a great young leader for our younger students. That's pretty special. Sounds like you're a pretty good student. Who did you bring here with you tonight?
My mom.
Your mom? That's pretty great. Well, we have a certificate here. Uh, it reads, West Central School Corporation, board trustees, please present this board for outstanding achievement based on citizenship, citizenship, service, contributions to others, and pursuit of academic excellence. We're happy to have you here as students, and I think you're doing a great job. You've done good work.
Thank you.
Eden, do you want me in the front? You know why you're here? Yeah. It's kind of like duh, right? Who'd you bring with you tonight? Yeah. Just two months ago, I was up here presenting another award to another girl that is good friends with my daughter, and you're friends with both my daughters, so I'm thankful that my girls are making friends with the right people, so. I've got a little thing to read here tonight. Again, it doesn't say who it's from, but I'll just read through it if I could. It says Eden shows integrity and is always doing the right thing. She is helpful and enthusiastic. She is so energetic and always ready to lend a hand to a fellow student. She is currently one of our student ambassadors and has been such a great leader to our younger students. That's really great that you can be alike to others. Appreciate that. Who's your, who's your teacher this year? Okay. Well, here is an award paper, and you can read this as well. See if we should smile for that here. Who's that saying? That came from, all those things came from multiple teachers actually, okay?
Yeah.
So, all four girls.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, keep it going.
Okay, I think that's all. Let's see. I don't see that. I don't see. I'm gonna ask for some public comment, and then if there is none after that, whether there is or isn't, if you would like to stay, you won't too, but then you're free to go as well before we start the rest of the session. So at this time, would there be any public comments, Stephen? Okay, Eden, we're gonna continue on with the meeting, but if you'd like to leave now, Eden. Thanks for coming.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, I could have a motion to approve the agenda. So, who's the president? That's second. Yes? All in favor of the agenda as presented tonight, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. I could have a motion to approve the minutes from regular session and executive session from October 2nd. All in favor of the minutes, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. I could have a motion for requisitions 24-708 through 24-744. Have some discussion.
A larger one, he was telling here, are installation of a huddle camera. So this was purchased from the, the huddle camera was purchased through the athletic, so we'll be able to live stream games and things, practices, and then just use that phone footage as time goes by. So we're really excited about that. Microsoft renewal, this is for all of our machines. There's the huddle camera, a range of camera ones, again, that's coming out of 9500, which is athletic. Athletic fund that kind of sweep through, and they, they first up through that.
Where is that?
It will be in the high school, at the play of high, so that it will go down onto the court. High, so they're low electricity, so that's part of the, the cost to install that, is to run the electric. To, to do all that, so it's, it's quite. Removing porches and stumps, there are some trees that have been very bad about leaving a mess behind. We talked about that as we kind of walked around, especially over the pool area. There's a couple of them that are losing a lot, and these are small little. Yes, but they've dropped debris on top of the breezeway such that can't get the debris out. They'll have to take off the lashing to get to it, so it's quite a big deal. There are other trees that Jamie kills that are not the right trees for the place where they are. They're growing too vain, especially one by the pool. It's tattooed wall. It's gonna get larger and the roots. Yes, some subscription rules for library materials on the bells, high school and elementary. On down lead company for nature inspections, enter, pass, uh, into elementary, oxygen, and elementary gym. Okay, now, you see some Title I supplies, this is. Seen that desk, that's also coming out of Title I supplies, and some weld shop outlets. There's issue with some of that, one of the outlets, the weld shop. So when they put down, again, they put down. They lay it down, it had sparks. There's nothing wrong with the outlet, because you pump other things into it. Put other welders into it, does the same thing, so we've had people that check out to look at it, and they really don't. Build like another outlet run that the welders could be pumped into, so that could possibly do that at the same time, that's replaced, it's fixed, like, electrical service. They may have to run a new line.
Oh, there's a wall, they have to have outlet too, right? But they tried.
They tried.
And they held it?
Yes.
Oh, I, they, they only wanted it.
No, they don't pay much. Safety straps aren't born basketball helmets, it's a good place, so I think for three of them, it's seventeen dollars.
Just like those.
That was the cheapest, cheapest one, so it's like, oh.
Any other questions on requisitions? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. I could have a motion to review personnel report as presented here. Also.
You have, just remember, you have a couple for some reports. One is from October, the first of the month. The thing on the top list is number six. Like, we don't know.
Is there any questions on that person, or sort of, any of the board? All in favor of the personnel report, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, at this time, I have a motion to open the hearing, the West Central School Corporation ten agreement. The West Central classroom teachers association. And Dr. Rose is gonna present some information about the collective bargaining agreement, and then we'll have some opportunity for the public to provide some input.
Um, and we have a couple of our members of association here that. I guess I guess. And I, and I just appreciate the collaborative efforts we have both ways. I know that they want us, for teachers, for their students here at West Central, and we need to try and to, you know, work together to do what we can financially, is, is always, it's struggled with our limited means, and state's not helping us out a lot. Not getting funding next year, and this year's pretty tight as well. As you know, funding is tied to students, so a student, we get more money, we lose a student, we lose money. So, um, West Central and the board have been very prudent over the past years, and looking at the finances, and working within our means, and doing the best we can, so I feel that the, the contract that's proposed is, is a good contract. It's been posted on the website, it's been ratified by the community. The process is, you come to a tentative agreement, agree verbally, yes, we, we agree this, this will work. The association will ratify that, we've kind of waited on them in the past, and then it's posted on our website, it's on front of our website, the main page is there, and it's also under board documents, so anybody, public complaint, it'll be there for a little while. And so the purpose of the hearing is for the community to hear discussion about the collective bargaining agreement, and for anyone to voice objection to it or support for it. And, and then, uh, then after that time, then the board could ratify that contract. So, so maybe kind of touch on some of the highlights of what we're, what we're working on. You should have a copy of the contract there. I did not give you the online version, but I could walk through the page numbers. And then, Leanne, if you want to hop in at any time, please do so, while.
I don't even have it, so I'm going out.
Page two, one of the things we talked about was changing the definition of a bargaining agreement to, um, to include part-time staff, so we can read upon that. We're waiting on IRB to do their business. We collectively, both, both of us together, sent a letter to IRB a month or so ago, and said, hey, we'd like to change the definition. IRB has thirty days to hear from people that would not like us to make that change, and then no rule on that, say, yes, you can go ahead, or no, you can. People object, or whatever. And so we're waiting on IRB to kind of get the fine guidance on that, so that's still going. Page three, the bottom is association name. Firstment of substitute pay. Highlights, page five, that's language about CPR. Providing that training, they'll toss the teachers, lactation space, ownership of work products, so those are the kind of sections 10, 11, and 12. Page six. Uh, we talked about insurance contributions, and you can see those amounts on, on there. Talked about appointing a member of the association to the Mason Insurance Trust, we currently do that, so we'll analyze that document. To ratify, or we, we discussed as preliminary agreement about providing HSA contribution. Coming back to reiterate, we have money next year toward health, because we realize health insurance premiums went up twenty-two percent. For all face, schools, lawyers, so. It's been a sizable increase. And a little bit of history on that, that the base board is set up, made up of superintendents and members of the association that come together to meet, and then over the years, we've had points on insurance increases, and so there are some years we should have taken a bigger increase, but not agree on that. It never has to be voted, all of us, and so you don't take a look, the increase along the way, you pay at some point, and that's kind of this year, where we had to pay to kind of get that ratified. Page seven, under Article seven, Article twenty-three, need absence, so we're letting teachers accrue a little bit more PTO time, increasing hundred and ten days, and now hundred and twenty. Page eight. Uh, just language about part-time people that will have to remove, if we don't get them to, to agree with our interpretation of the definition of things allowed. Page eight, talks, we'll toss up one first time, um, there's some language that's in there as well. On page twelve, just more defining, changing hundred and ten to hundred and twenty days, so TV's coming through. Page thirteen, there's a section. About military leave.
Well. Yeah, I did.
Well, military. And remove all the severance from retirees in this year. And then we won't be investigating 401A standard at the next coming year. We made some changes on page thirteen, fourteen, to after-school study tables, night time, that's a nice move. One hundred and eighty-five. Those increased by dollars for some. Only one other substantial, along with you. Page twenty, like, ten, twenty is a compensation plan, yeah, so our goal was to get to forty-five thousand. By the second year of this contract, and this is a two-year contract, by the twenty-twenty-seven. So the first year, teachers were seventy-seven dollars, second year will be two thousand dollars. For that second year, the teacher will be, the vintage only started at forty-five-five. Also, a consideration of someone who has early literacy endorsement, so if they have that, then, then receive additional help. Other small things, have a lot of success. Do you want to add anything else? From association's perspective, about the process, or if you have a contract?
Um, we were just, it kind of helped, maybe, hopefully, attract new teachers here, because of the HSA, that's now like, at least thirteen hundred for those. Which we never had before, so that's nice, and it'll go with them if they leave. It was, it was kind of nice to have offset the insurance, because a lot of teachers were very worried about twenty-two percent, taking a big loss, like, four hundred dollars a day, I mean, that's what we were worried about. And with this contract, the most that a teacher is probably gonna be losing is about thirty-five dollars on a pay. But that's what the interest that they've chosen. So, a lot of teachers were surprised that there might just be like thirty-one cents, or, you know, they're paying not four hundred dollars less, so they were pleasantly surprised by that. Happy with the HSA. What else?
Instead of the seven fifty pack of ten years.
Yeah, then this second year, with that 401A. Yeah. But we are still concerned about next year's insurance, so. We, we were locked into a year, two-year contract, but we're still concerned. So, I'm hoping that teachers will stay after this year, because I was worried how many teachers were gonna leave our school because of this, so I'm hoping that one will stay. But I think the process went very well. Yeah. Only got probably one or two left, so.
This is a big, this is a hearing for anybody who's.
Dan.
Thank you.
Board members, as you know, we had auto leave, and so we needed to fill this spot. So, Dr. Rose got a little bit of information on how that's going, and then we'll go from there, Ken.
So last month, you approved his resignation, he strove to push the home out of the community, out of this area, and so, um, we have cut out information, and board members have cut out information about soliciting individuals who may be interested. I had one individual call me, at least, we called, talked on the phone, had a nice, really good conversation. I encouraged her to send a letter to the board to consider that person, and she was curious about it, but did not end up giving any information to you. I also had another teacher from high school approach me and say that a parent was interested. Possibly talking to me about being on the board as well. I also encouraged that teacher, the parent, know, give me a call. In the woods, I'll reach out to them and ask them if they were interested. Parent did not reach out, the teacher did not follow up that, give up that personally. And then lastly, I had one individual who was also interested, actually followed through and provided a letter of, of interest to you, and you have a copy of that letter in your packet, and that was Heather Reese. Heather is a parent who lives in our community, does not have a child at Central yet, but will hopefully, at some point, soon. So, she's given you a little bit of information in her letter. I would ask you to kind of read the information that's there, and the board can, ISBA is giving some guidance as far as that process, and how boards can determine who uses that replacement. Can use a variety of different manners by which you, you know, but ultimately, board would have to make a decision after. About who'd be that replacement. Or different. So this time, the only person has come forward to express interest is Heather Reese.
You take the letter, then? Yeah, Heather Reese, take mine. Let's stand up, you've had the chance to read that letter, your packet beforehand, so. Does anybody have any thoughts or comments on the application?
I want to hear from this, from this Reese.
Here, Miss Reese, too. Okay.
So I am from Chatsworth, and I have been as a West Central grad. Uh, we got married, and he has thirty-five acres down here, and we built a house down here. And I have a three-year-old son who eventually will go to West Central once he's school age. Um, I've been in education for twenty-one years, I was a teacher for eighteen years in that. And then the last two years, I've been the Stark County Special Ed Director, so I oversee all of the special ed for NACs, for Chatsworth. I'm vested in the school district we live, because it's where we want our child to go. So I was honored that there was an opening that I could reach out about.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions for her, or for the board, by any means?
Uh, so at this time, I guess I would ask the board if they would make a recommendation to approve Heather Reese to fill this vacant spot. And I would also need a second. Also, Karen. All in favor of Heather Reese, our vacant board position, they say aye. All opposed? Then we'll leave that. Passes. Very late.
Thank you.
And at that point, she would, she would stay on the board, which we hope she would, and she would need to file, as everyone else does, and get her, her, her signatures, ballot. And then run against whoever else would be running best.
Thank you. That clarification is. Absolutely, she is, the next meeting, she will soon. Absolutely, she is, the next meeting she will sort of position.
She will need to take a note, but she, she will never get out, she has it on. Plus, you, you're a little more, you support training, all good, but there's.
Thank you. All right, and then I will fire him. All right. I need a motion to appoint Jasper County Public Library to, there's a letter here in your package, you've probably read.
What a clarification, so, um, because we have, we have a part of Jasper County that person serves on Jasper County Public Libraries. And the recommendation mechanicates that she expressed interest, she's an English teacher at Canadian High School. Wants the board proof of her mouth and then pay for it.
So move this person. I'll second the motion. All in favor of.
You said you have a case.
Pointing, feeds to the Public Library Board, please say aye. Uh, all of those, motion passes. Okay. I think we touched on this last time on the West Central Evaluation Plan. So I just need a motion to revise this plan in front of you here. So move. Yes. All, here.
I can kind of go over this a little bit, nothing much has changed with any of the substance with the plan. How many, how many observations or evaluators or any of the rubrics? Nothing has changed with the exception of the back page. So I've had discussions with the teachers about a change. We know that there's been a lot of testing that students do and we're trying to give more flexibility to the teachers to pick and choose some assessments, but still get enough data so we know where students' areas of strength weaknesses are. So on the back, you'll see it says Western Community Corporation District Wide Learning Measures. This makes up approximately five percent of all of our. Or ten, excuse me, ten percent of all of our evaluations, ten percent of my evaluation, ten percent of Mike's, ten percent of teacher's. Everybody has a given data. And so up to this point, we've just used K through twelve, NWA, and I ready for that data, math and the. Uh, so we've taken averages of scores. Well, some grades are kind of cutting back with a bit because they're using checkpoint data. Checkpoints are now mandated, they have to use three times a year. So you can see there's a lot of testing coordinators doing. NWA, fall, winter, spring, they're doing checkpoints, fall, winter, spring. They're doing I ready, fall, winter, spring, there's a lot of testing. And so we kind of talked about, well, let's just care back for that. So on the data portion, K through six will still use NWA and I ready because teachers feel that that gets enough data to. But the middle school would like to use the checkpoints as their data part. They feel that that's, that's where, um, that's the end that's exactly what we're going to do. Because they're not giving NWA through their own checkpoints. So that's really the one change, that the middle school got carved out, they're using private checkpoints. Everybody else is still using them. Rest of the state's the same, but anything in red is what's, is what's changed. Black is what they're saying across that. Thank you.
All in favor of the revised valuation plan, they say aye. All of those. Motion passes. All right, any motion to approve the already passed NFA National Convention overnight trip? If I make that motion.
So just so you know, I give, I go ahead and give them permission and sometimes it's, oh, I forgot to put this out, so you can see it. I told you fifteen, sixteen. So I'm getting it shortly after that, so it's. Two states.
I would assume this was not something, this was probably not.
No, they know.
First time. All time, yeah. I need motion, uh, all in favor of the overnight convention trip, they say aye. Uh, all of those. Motion passes. Need a motion to approve items declared surplus. I'll second the motion.
Most of these are technology things that are either broken or do not work anymore. Can't be turned on, are missing perks, have been scalped, other things. Uh, some of the iPads I see on here, we have sold those in the past, circle back to that. Sometimes we've sold them to vendors, but you only get five dollars a piece. There's, they won't update apps if we're getting too old. Last time we did this was a couple of years ago, we sold it for like five dollars. They're not really good for a lot of things because you're. Right, a hundred pounds of something that makes sense. So that's the majority. And if you look at the bottom, there are some welders that Bill would like to put on this list. So there are four welders that will put on go heels. I encourage you to, if that place let the kids know.
They have to go on, go first before working. To buy.
And so when we're, when Chromebook says, because there's one area not for everybody to have one. By the board declaring surplus, giving us a standard, giving that amount of heat, it's only four. So I don't know how you go, if I have to go and say, I just do it. I mean, good, there's only one, so he gets a.
But Bill would tell them.
Yes, so Tuesday, like he could tell them Tuesday the auction's opening. And I did last time for the most of like fifty dollars or forty dollars. Thank you.
All in favor of the item declared surplus, please say aye. Uh, all of those, motion passes. Need a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip, the seven and grade to Chicago. Children's, my name, science, art, industry. Who would be. Okay. First time they've done that, or is it? It's been a long time, so it's really excited to go back. Flower. I've had an experience, yeah. All in favor of the S and P field trip, please say aye. All of those. Motion passes. We've got the school board policy eighty-five forty, community use of school facilities. This will be our second reading tonight. So I can have a motion to approve a second reading of what's presented here. All in favor, there, that's it. Yes.
Um, anything in red as well added, black is our current policies, anything stricken out would be. We present this last month for the board to, to review. We've actually had a group of individuals come together to review our facility usage contract or agreement. And the last page kind of succinctly tells you what those charges are. So that's going to change for us. So we put it in the classifications, class one, two, three, four, and five, kind of describes. Which page before, which, which, which group. Classification is for each group and then, um, you can see the charge for that one. Giving a lot more consideration to obviously the fundraisers, why are schools. Not as we sponsor the dinner school that publishes nonprofit, like boys, uh. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, only groups, search groups.
Class five, correct, no, class five.
Five.
Five, you say that again, but it didn't combine. On the front page, there's a number five, it's all related, not school. Maybe there's not a number five or it's charged, right?
So maybe the word categories probably not current. Maybe it should say the following. It's a following, it's just kind of order in which we give preference, so. It may not align with the categories for building, building classes. But it's just hierarchy of things that we don't believe that should not be charged, which is one that should. I really don't, we're really not related.
One is not one on the class.
Higher than.
All in favor of the second reading of policy eighty-five forty, community use of school facilities, please say aye. Uh, all of those, motion passes. And your motion to approve the insurance contribution consideration for the twenty twenty-six plan here. Also, the.
I talked about that. Because of timing, this is really no one's obvious task, because of timing. Board is not ratified the contract yet, but open enrollment's already started. And the volume closes fourteen. So in order to help people make decisions, they need information. So it's really would be fair to people on fourteen to say, okay, the board proved this, you're going to really, you're going to look at the suit about what you're going to do. And so. So the contributions here are reflected in the, in the agreement, in the contract, in the association. And so, um, taking that amount and then we apply it to support staff, get maybe not all of that, but they get the support increase that contribute, that we pay. Um, and then also there's a consideration of a one-time HSA contribution to full-time support staff. And teachers, an amount of thirteen hundred dollars. And then for support staff who are not full-time, they work two or sixty days, would be about a thousand dollars. If they're a whole of them qualified school preparation plan. And that language is exact language that's in the teacher's contract. So they would have to sign up for PPO two or PPO three, those are the hierarchical plans. You're on PPO one, that's not a hierarchical plan, so you're not qualified. Um, if you take insurance from your husband, the SAD, I'm a teacher, and I take my husband's insurance, he works at first. I would not qualify to take these insurance, just be, but it doesn't need to take these insurance, plan to, or. To help encourage incentivize people to build up their HSA. And as you have people, they're probably kind of kind of looking at your plans very carefully because of the increases. And I know that somewhere they will move across. Now, we don't have a full lot of the PPO one, which is the catalog. Costs a lot for families of thirty-six thousand dollar plan. So we have people that are moving to the two, to the three, so. Kind of scary people if you've never been on a hierarchical plan before to move. But it'll help, you know, to be helping your family, it could be a good move. But to help kind of offset that risk, that that one-time contribution, today just they would kind of help take that sticker shot off. It's something we need to take on every day as a one-time expense. So in a hurry, it could be something you take that each year and try and help people really get their HSA. Good spot, kind of as Marilyn mentioned, it's portable, take with you. Um, you can invest a portion of it, or if they don't know, finale lets you invest for a portion of it if you'd like. But they can also contribute up to the year, so.
There were the insurance contribution consideration, they say aye. Uh, all of those.
It's kind of a weird thing, so the question is, why would I have the teachers association part in there? And I, I realize it's kind of a weird thing to do, but, you know, we're not, we're not applying the contract yet. And the only reason it's still hanging out there is because negotiations just kind of pushed back a little bit, but then also we're waiting for this part-time thing to work its way to firm. So meantime, open enrollment started, we're already, what, four days into it. People, especially get a twenty-two percent increase, we're taking a big part of that, they're taking a big part of that, they need to. Work for them, who are handling, it's free on all the next, you can say, we're going to make a decision.
It's amazing how some of our teachers, they do know the difference between an MSA and an HSA. So we did have to kind of educate our younger ones and say, the HSA is definitely good for you because you're young, you're healthy. You plug this money in and it's going to be there for you. So, um, a lot of them are now having to call, who came to our school? Ready to go? Yes, to get an HSA asset. Cause they didn't have. So that way they have money going away.
We have set up our budget, we need that one, so. Cause if we don't have a vehicle to send the money to, we don't have the money, so that was a whole fall with. But we're now just in the throes of people going through and picking their points, so we're going to.
Paul, you're up. Okay. Uh, just a few little highlights, um, and having to report that, uh, we are in full compliance for all of our state immunization requirements. Uh, owners delivering in six years. So that's, uh, a daunting task, but, uh, Mr. Paul did a great job in, in working with that and making sure that all the, um, students had either their shots or signed the, uh, information. So that was, we haven't had that in a while. So it's been quite some time to be doing full compliance with that. But that was a good place for us. Um, our elementary attendance right now is approximately about ninety-six percent. So it's, uh, we're still implementing engagement, consistent student participation. Uh, we started our swimming classes and our PE classes and off to a successful start. Seen too many complaints, uh, from the students. I think it's been going very well and, you know, the students are learning a lot and have been in there a couple of times and, uh. It seemed real excited and really engaged in doing a lot of the activity for, um. The PTC had seventy-three creative entries in the pumpkin contests this year, so they were really neat. If you didn't get a chance to see them, they were, uh, uh, pretty awesome. Uh, for me, being the first timer, it was unbelievable. I thought it was, I, I didn't believe this was going to happen like that, it was, it was a really cool experience, so. Um, I was, I was really excited about that. Um, our third grade, uh, visited Connor Prairie, uh, this, this year, uh, this past month. And, uh, the kindergarten goes to Caroline Orchard. And our fifth grade is going to, uh, going to an upcoming trip here tomorrow for, uh, J A D Bistown. Uh, so they'll be, they'll be working there and, uh, and excellent turnout for our, uh, parent-teacher conferences. A lot of positive feedback from, uh, not only the teachers, but also, uh, the parents and the students. So. A long, really good experience. So it's a long, really good experience.
That went well.
Went pretty well.
Mr. Walsh, you said you think you're going well with the pool. If you talk with the opposite sides of the lines.
I have none.
Are they happy?
As far as I know, I mean, I see the water moving when they're in there. Sometimes when I go by there, I saw it must be doing well.
Do you want to keep that?
Yeah. Yes, I know that they work. But I know that. Well, I mean, we had, I think we had one day that the temperature main went down a little bit. But it wasn't, it wasn't too bad. And all I know is that the kids are really enjoying it. And I've seen some kids that are, you know, normally a little rowdy and they're a little bit scared of the water, which is kind of a good thing and kind of almost a little bit, but it helps them, you know, kind of grow and learn a little bit and know that they can't always play around everywhere. So it's, it's nice to see that the, and the skills that they're, they're learning in their class have been amazing. So. Thank you.
Little High School's been busy with many great activities and achievements so far. There's many different areas for students to show their different strengths and talents. Fourteenth have been represented very well, doing very well this fall. Also football was undefeated. Obviously played for the central championship tournament. Volleyball increased their conference wins by a lot. Runners made it out of the sectional, step up run, women's and men's sports. Girl volleyball was open tonight with, we're leading that, so a couple more up there. So that's good against the class then. Then the band has received high marks in their competitions for marching band and the hissing contest. And then along with the fire, they had their fall concert three weeks ago that we found a good and was so well attended. Almost the entire side of the festival event. That was great to see. And then that same weekend, the gentleman department presented child play. A very entertaining, cute presentation and now it's going to be actually go fast. So that was with our staff and graduate also. And there's a group of really good core seniors. Very sad, they're seventy days in the ending, so they're hoping to bring back the spring production. So look for something happening this spring too. Carol White R and C came to present electrical safety to the high school. That was, they actually said that was one of the most participations that they've gotten from kids that they're clapping in the middle of it. That type of stuff set off a vibe. But it was very informative in front of the program. Middle school held their annual Trojan races by leaving their academic goals and 80% of the students qualified for that. For the high school center for the same goals, they went bowling. There's 138 students qualified for that. For parent teacher conferences, we had 127 between all the different teachers. I thought it was pretty good. Middle school by far, you know, is the most broad and higher, but they're pretty full. So speaking of testing, the seventh and eighth grade students have taken the first timer checkpoint. That's a new one required by the state. We're helping there. Very, very pleased with the results that we're seeing so far. This year, we piloted it last year when it wasn't required. So this year we're actually taking standards of the form A and the form B. So those that didn't pass form A, we're going to do some new teaching left. We picked form B and see if we can gain that to that way that then they get to the summer of the April. Hopefully it'll be some good results. Then it's been. Sophomores and juniors took PSAT, PSAT last week, two weeks ago. And the high school, we're still continuing to work towards the plan for our early college endorsement for more opportunities and things for our students. That deadline application, which we're on track for on the 7th of August. There will be a site visit, a thanksgiving, a splendid thing that will be endorsed. And those of you that small, early college school and so.
Thank you.
Nice. My hands, the high school staff, we all work. That's, there's a lot of work that goes into that.
Yes. The leadership team that's been doing all that is Mark, Becky, Brian, Martin. That's picked that a lot. Worked over two years.
Say something, Apple summertime. They've said, meaning this last week.
Something we're going to know coming up next week. We're in a partnership with Sal and the, you have any kind of, they're the ones that bring endorsement stuff. But our partnership with ID Tech, Kokomo is helping us a lot through the process. So we joined them virtually.
Can you talk about what the goal that is with, with, and the student, what is, what is early, what is early college? What, what's the?
So it's to get them, so to be thinking, it's a whole school thought about college, you know, events post-high school in that way. And to keep adding more dual credits to really get these kids thinking about, they can earn these college credits now for free in high school. To really push that to where, and it kind of partners with the ICC, the Indiana College Corning Out to, so they can earn, if they get that, that's 30 college credit that transfers the block that every public college in Indiana has to take note. May not necessarily transfer perfectly, but at least it'll count for electives and stuff like that. So they could easily, I'll try and get some kids almost two years of college. Then thirty, at least a year, so they can walk in as a sophomore and think a lot about it.
So Indiana, absolutely. Get incredible.
That does not, doesn't have to. They've just done a new thing, like the private schools that have to take it and the states working that most of those are not taking it. Actually, they choose to go through it. Now, it doesn't mean that they won't pay them, you know, if they do that. But to transfer the whole block of 30 out of state. And trying to get a lot more. And it's a whole culture you're trying to create for the school. So, you know, we're going to start looking at starting new grade, like each group of each grade, we'll take somewhere for college visits. Every freshman may not want to go to, if we're going to Grace College or something. If there's 30 or 40 kids that's interested in going there, you know, we're going to make sure that we're going to get them to somewhere like a major university, Purdue, private school, somewhere like ID Tech and probably like Dean Devlin or something where a lot of our kids go anyway. To show them what possibilities and opportunities are for them. And there's, there's a lot of kids in sixth years that are already, they've got a monitor credit, probably already that it's fully endorsing. It's taken work because Becky, Mark, Ian and Gray have all been taking classes to the certified chenille teaching dual credit classes. Some of that was done through the ISTEM or ITEACH or the state state program that funded those for those. But not to, we know a couple of classes that venture. Yeah, but it's been a big bond for teachers to do that.
I want to give a long one too.
It'll be, it'll be a big fiver, I think, in a half.
Did you say you're 80% of the way there, 90%?
Yeah, yes, we are just now happy sending, we have two final signatures where now we got the template to fill in for our portfolio. So we're taking a half a day next week to really dig into that stuff.
Some of the things I would share would be new elementary serving lines were installed for fall break. So if you remember a couple of years ago, we did the high school serving lines, so the elementary lines. And the governor, Mike Beckwith, this year on the 29th, like tour, speed tour. I talked to him the whole time he was walking. So all about our school, our community, early college, credit opportunities. Tried to put some plugs along the way. And so, you know, like Wednesday, screw that, and good, good visits. So we could stop the old buildings and rushed out, so there's only about 20 of them. So we, yeah, so we were, we were pulled today. Then an early release on the 21st. So from that early release, time we spent, each building will kind of talk about, seeing the same service learning and how the teachers provide some best practices. Each of both buildings kind of share their staff work well with that. So that will be part of our day. I-Learn checkpoints, so little metrics going to kind of work with that. We have a couple of features that have gone to some training and they're back and provides support for the teachers. Or even CTD, some things are, that teacher will stay. There's a school board conference that COSBA, C-O-S-S-B-A, to replace the National School Board Association, if you follow it under ISBA. Last couple of years, the National School Board Association's having memberships, those of states. And it's COSBA that's kind of stepped in to be the national organization for Indiana, you know, amongst that one. Well, there's a, their national conference is being held in Louisville, Kentucky, March 12th through 15th. So it's, it's usually, I have these things in California and other places I've never been. If I've ever been to a national conference, I'm really interested in that. But I thought I would just kind of plant that seed and let you kind of think about that. Cause Louisville's pretty close. It's March 12th through 15th. So if you see something from ISBA about that, it's COSBA conference. I can't really, I downloaded the agenda, but it's not specific enough to say what it's about. But if I get there, then if that's something you want to think about, maybe going, or a long ago, or maybe it's only a day or two. But that would be something I want to think about.
If I would have won pre-registration.
Right there.
I did mark up here.
I never know. It's quite expensive. I think it'll go down well. And yeah.
Just to get in?
Unless that included lodging. I don't think it was, I think it was just a three-day conference. But I didn't look that.
I can throw something together. We have a name for substitutes. So if anybody knows or anybody that'd be interested in being a substitute, have them contact Chastity in the front office. Look into that, they can fill out an application out, they're interested in studying. I've given you a copy of a fund report at your desk. Your place there, as is each year, listing all the accounts. Again, if you match that up with the requisition list, the numbers are left, which funds is coming out of. So, um. Yeah, our fund balances. As you notice, to go down to 1702, winter by maintenance has, has been a fund. It's just never had money there. It's, I didn't make it, it's there before I came. So I don't know, Dawn started at some point or DM it or, I think it probably, probably came from Chuck. Chuck Hall this year, to make sure he probably got it. He also had a revenue report, which I told him 20, uh, received in this one. Construction update, winding down the construction. We're down to just some last minute thing to maybe fix. Sent an email out today, a little bit ago, that they had a crane on site a couple of weeks ago to go to take off the chiller off of, off of Roof over by the bag shop. And then they're going to come set the chiller back November 19th afternoon. So we'll put it back up on the roof and then we'll work on reconnecting everything back up. Hopefully we need the chiller now, thank goodness, but that was the purpose of the. So that's what happened on 19th.
For a long, one year, we want service at both times.
One thing about travel. So we had to learn about winter buying insurance. So I have been in communication with the group and they reached out to travelers because I've heard that travelers would provide insurance for the turbine. They've worked in the markets, they're able to get pricing, but Mount Holy had a limit of 3.3 million. Average of only 2.8 million, like it shows with Dennis. The deductible for travel will be $100,000. Currently deductible now for Mount Holy is $25,000. And the premium would be $70,500 compared to $2,000. So it'd be sizable. I did not respond, but she asked if I wanted to do that. So there's a copy of the, I think right now, not having any other options. Let's see, just we just sit tight on that. They know that some of the things that were leading to this higher premium would include the manufacturer. That it's hard to get replacement parts. You've seen that too, it takes a harder, you know, particularly from Germany. And then the age of the turbine is such that it's not getting any younger. So I have not reached back out and heard and told her anything interesting about it. So it's a little bit of a facial that.
This is just people off the side of the road. Provide movement. They might be getting this, but they're on the other four or five, they're out there to write, so they're going to be the same. They want to go for that.
I know, Tepidina Valley will send me an email once in a while. Cause they have issues keeping our turbine running. They were always there, it would be down quite a bit, same kind of thing. Just got to keep it going, if we have to keep it going. At the point where it doesn't, it could be, they could affect our operations. 350,000, 400,000 a year, just electricity costs. A month, it could be at least 35,000 if so much raising the rates. So there, you can guarantee it's going to be at least 35,000 if you're talking 2,000. Multiplied times 12, there's our, there's our electricity cost. So thanks to, it runs, we've got to keep that.
Were you asking about the turbine? No, I just asked you about how their machines go on, so if they're having the same. I was curious, I was just wondering if we're having the same engine.
And we probably wouldn't have had issue, we didn't have.
Motion through, you got your own plate. All moving. I'll second. But do you have any discussion on it? All in favor of payroll and claims, please say aye. All opposed? Passes. Do you have anything else? I'll say we got 60 days or so, so our January meeting, and it'll go quick. My time is going to be up. So be thinking about, you know, fill this seat. Just putting that out there.
Would be small.
Hopefully we can reach out at any time. We're going to reach out to you anytime. We enjoy.
So it's possible.
Didn't, didn't pass, they, they did it?
Yes.
Sorry, all that, we talked about that, we're.